Go ahead Chair.
Okay, good evening and thank you for viewing the April 27th, 2021 meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. We are holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. I want to start by thanking the community and visitors to Arcata and the county for their efforts to slow the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Remember the three most important things you can do to protect yourself and others in the community are masking up, practicing social distance of six feet or more, and washing your hands regularly. These fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open. Importantly, these items show support for frontline and essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are two ways to do so. Number one, if you join the webinar on a computer or similar device, click the raised hand icon when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. When it is time for the public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. Number two, if you did not log into the webinar, you may join the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen, press star nine on your phone when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. Dialing star nine will let the clerk know that you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. Can we begin now with a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner of State Elkhart?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
And Chair Tagney?
Here, thank you Director Lawyer. Now we can move on to oral communications and Director Lawyer, do we have any?
I see none. We have one in attendance from the public who's here to, I believe, speak on the matter on your agenda.
Okay. Next, we will move on then to the consent calendar, and the only item we have on the consent calendar is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 23rd, 2021. If we don't have any amendments to that, then do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you like to do a roll call on that?
Yes, Commissioner of State Elkhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Davies?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
I got a quick question regarding that. Do I need to recuse myself because I wasn't present?
You do not.
Okay.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor, I'm sorry, Chair, Vice Chair Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Tagney?
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to identify for the record. I don't believe I called Commissioner Davies during the roll call, so I want to acknowledge that he is absolutely present. If I did, I was unaware of it, so just correcting the record if needed.
Okay, thank you. We have one public hearing item tonight, and we'll move on to that, and that's to consider the approval of the Bazemore Parcel Map subdivision and coastal development permit at 285 and 329 Bayside Road. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes. Can I have the director pull up the PowerPoint? Thank you. Before you this evening is a parcel map subdivision and coastal development permit. And next slide please. Staff is making a recommendation to approve the parcel map and the coastal development permit. The commission and public will find the action for approval as attachment one. The findings of approval, including the environmental review, CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act exemption, Class 15 Minor Land Division, is included in the findings of approval, and that will be found in Exhibit One of Attachment A. The conditions of approval are in Exhibit Two, and then the tentative parcel map itself is Exhibit Three. Next slide please. The property is located between Bayside Road to the north, Union Street to the west, and then Semola Boulevard, Old Arcata Road to the south. Next slide please. This gives a little closer view of the site. It is 285 with the Fickle Hill Creek with the small little tributary coming in at the north end towards Bayside Road. Masonic, yes, there we go. Masonic Lodge is to Bayside Road 251, and then there's some single-family residential developments around to the kind of the southwest, and there's another school to the south, apartments to the further south as well, and then more apartment complexes to the east. Most of the dwelling, most of the parcels north of Bayside Road are single-family. The parcel is about three, close to three and a half acres, and it does have the Fickle Hill Creek, Perennial Creek, as we see in this view. Next slide please. This is the Exhibit Three, the tentative parcel map. Parcel map is a subdivision of four or fewer lots. This is one existing lot, about 3.3 acres in size, and it's being divided into two parcels. The zoning for the parcel is coastal residential, rural residential, and then inland coastal zoning, or inland zoning is the rural, very low density. Those are our large lot, about 20,000 square foot parcel sizes. It's kind of a transition area between more of the outlined areas and as we move into the denser area. There typically are some of those zoning districts that would be associated with steeper slopes. This doesn't really have that slope constraints to it, but it is one of our, kind of our low-density large lot developments. And next slide please. This is parcel one, and it's about 50,000 square feet, 1.2 acres in size. There's an existing charter school that the Planning Commission approved back in 2009. The school is located on the kind of the northeastern portion of the parcel. It was a existing single-family residence that was converted to the charter school. There's a couple small sheds to the, as we head south on that parcel. It is kind of an unusual-shaped parcel, and what they're utilizing for the common property line is the center line of Fickle Hill Creek. Next slide please. And here we have parcel two. It's a larger parcel, closer to 96,000 square feet and just over two acres. This site here does have an existing single-family residence located on it, and it's a, apparently it was moved there about 60 years ago, and it's known as the old Stokes House, Farmhouse. So it is an older home on that site. It definitely is a larger parcel, and both parcels, one and two, do have frontage on Bayside Road, and I'll get into that discussion a little bit more. Next slide please. The parcels are encumbered by the Alquis Priolo, and the staff report went into some details on that. It was thoroughly reviewed when the Planning Commission looked at the entitlements to the charter school, the North Coast Preparatory Academy has their, I believe it's the middle school is operating there now. And the Alquis Priolo is a state law that basically mandates that we look for active faults, and active fault is 10,000 to 12,000 years before the last fault movement on there. And it really, there's a pretty large swath of the Alquis Priolo that does go through central Arcata. This is on the northern, I mean, the southern boundary of that, and you know, the Alquis Priolo and faults, they don't always follow property lines. So we have an existing parcel with existing development on it that has, you know, less than half of the parcel encumbered by the Alquis Priolo. There are some exemptions that can occur to allow development to happen without a fault evaluation report, and in this case, a subdivision does not qualify for that. And we really contemplated this, and we really looked at it, and we wanted to find a path forward with allowing the subdivision to occur, and then also protecting public health and safety by some mechanisms, and the conditions of approval in the staff report and findings do discuss those. And I can ask, get into further details if the Planning Commission has any other questions. There were extensive geologic studies done for the permitting of the charter school. Based on some of those geologic studies, there were structural improvements made to that school there. The house on resultant parcel two was moved there prior to the Alquis Priolo Act, so that predates the act itself. And, let's see. Oh, I did want to indicate that there is moderate liquefaction associated with the entire parcel as well. And so typically, a soils report would have been required for a subdivision, but again, we have existing uses on there. The subdivision could occur and property sold, and those uses still could continue as they are. And so we made a recommendation for deed restriction for new development that would encompass soils reports or geologic studies, including the fault evaluation report, depending on the type of development that's going to occur. Next slide please. Another encumbrance on the parcel is the Fickle Hill Creek. It's shown here. That's again the dividing line between the two parcels. We have a recorded wetland and creek protection combining zone. Staff is recommending that we re-record new stream protection area that will specify greater detail, the location of the center line of the creek, the top of bank of creek, and also a 25-foot setback from the top of bank. Included in the deed restriction that we're proposing would be the list of specific uses that are allowed within that stream protection area. The stream protection area would encumber both parcels, as you see here. Next slide please. And this is just a closer view of the building on resultant parcel one, the existing charter school. Portions of that are located within the stream protection area. That was contemplated again in the 2011 Planning Commission action, and based on the project at that time, the different resource agencies and referral departments felt that the way the school was proposed and existing conditions, it really wasn't going to have an impact on those environmentally sensitive habitat resources associated with the Fickle Hill Creek riparian area. And so we follow that line of thinking, and we basically believe that the re-recordation of a stream protection area will ensure protection of those resources there. Next slide please. The Coastal Commission had some referral comments, and they wanted to ensure that there was, quote, "a buildable area" within each of the resultant parcels. And, you know, I can't look in the crystal ball at this point because there could be a fault evaluation report done at some point and the entire site cleared of any fault hazards. They could determine that there might have been a fault there, but it's no longer considered active. This is a small area of resultant parcel one, and I do have a little correction. In the staff report, it just has the red hash line as the potential buildable area, and I realize there's that little flag shooting off towards the west that could be, could be utilized and further increases the buildable area on potential or proposed parcel one. The square one in the center of that, that is an easement for the Masonic Lodge to the north and west for sewer and water. So there is a little bit of an encumbrance on that parcel buildable area of that, but it does show that there is adequate area to build on it regardless of a fault evaluation report or not. Next slide please. And parcel two, being a much larger parcel, does have much more buildable area on that, so I'm just quickly showing you that. Again, both resultant parcels would have areas of stream protection and deed restriction or fault evaluation requirement on that. Next slide please. This is just a quick view of the area on the frontage of parcel two. You do see that there is an existing driveway that serves not only the businesses located to the west or to the east, but it also provides the main primary access to that existing farmhouse on parcel one, I mean, excuse me, parcel two. And we wanted to encourage the applicant to obtain permission to perfect that easement, and we do have a letter on file from the property owners there saying that they are fully aware of the subdivision and are going to work with the applicant to record that access deed there. We really wanted to utilize the existing driveway. It, there's many benefits to using existing driveways, less encroachments onto Bayside Road, and it also would reduce any of the fill and new development of the driveway to serve that parcel if we didn't have that access easement. So we certainly appreciate the property owners of both the subdivision application and the neighboring property owner cooperating and granting, working towards that re-recordation of that access. Next slide please. The findings of approval you'll find as the action Exhibit One. It includes the coastal development permit findings for the coastal land use element and the coastal land use and development guide. It also includes the citywide Arcata general plan and land use code findings. So you'll see a little breakdown in the staff report, including the findings for that. The findings of approval includes the subdivision requirements and also the environmental findings for that categorical exemption. We believe that as designed, again, these are existing conditions, basically we're, have two uses on this parcel, one parcel, and we're creating one use on each parcel. There are many further studies that were done with the entitlements granted with the charter school that looked at several things on the site, including the, we talked about the biological aspects of Fickle Hill Creek, seismic and geologic with the fault zone and the moderate liquefaction, but also then the cultural resources that potentially could be associated with that. Based on the conditions of approval and findings, staff recommends that the Planning Commission go ahead and adopt the categorical exemption. Next slide please. The conditions of approval, again, we went over some of the soils and geologic conditions that would be a deed restrictions, and it really depends on where the deed, where the proposed development is going to occur and what type of development. There were some soils reports and studies done on what would become parcel one. So if there was some development, let's say in that buildable area outside of the Alquis Priolo Zone, we don't anticipate further soils report studies would be required. There weren't any really soils report studies done on proposed parcel two at that time of those entitlements because they were really looking at only the school uses at that time and potential impacts. So there could be, if development was going to occur on parcel two outside of the Alquis Priolo Zone, there could be a requirement for an R1 soils report based on the moderate liquefaction. And then there's a condition of approval. We spoke about the re-recording, the existing wetland and creek protection combining zone. It, the recommended condition of approval again would be to increase the specificity of the location of the stream protection area and those allowed uses on it. The cultural and historic resource protections, this was in consultation with the Wiat tribal historic preservation officers. There was a cultural resource and archaeological study done with the 2011 approval of the charter school. There were some review of the entire property. Most ground disturbing activities were isolated to the school project, and so a lot of those ground or subsurface evaluations were done on that parcel. And the recommendations within that cultural resource report does include that further archaeological studies may be required on the site. So we did include that as a condition of approval. Already spoke about the access. There is a standard recreation fee associated with subdivisions, and so that would be a standard fee there. That helps maintain and acquire new parts or maintain the existing facilities based on that. There could be some subdivision improvements. We do have a sewer lateral program where a subdivision would trigger wanting to ensure that sewer and water and other utility services are served on the individual parcels and potential upgrades to the sewer lateral. So at this point, those would be sort of our isolated ground disturbing activities associated with the subdivision would be any utility work that was required as part of the subdivision improvements. And then, of course, the parcel map recordation, our standard process for that. They would submit the parcel map that is compliant with the tentative parcel map that you're reviewing tonight, and then we would get the signatures and record that. Next slide please. And again, just as a wrap up, staff is making a recommendation that the Planning Commission approve this project by adopting the action that you'll find in attachment one. It includes the findings and conditions of approval and the tentative parcel map. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Are there any commission questions of staff?
I have a question.
Please go.
Okay. And sorry for, if I put up the wrong little icon here on the Zoom. My understanding of what this subdivision could do is that it would allow for up to four accessory dwellings on the two resultant parcels, two on parcel one and two on the new parcel two. Does, does anything in the coastal development permit change that, or would those accessory units be allowed by right on the areas determined to be buildable if it passed all the other requirements?
Do you want to hazard a guess, Joe?
Yeah, no, I got this handled. So yeah, the parcel is located in a catex area or categorical exclusion area. So the city of Arcata, when we adopted our coastal land use element, identified areas where we felt that there's existing development and services and the lack of kind of coastal resources in the area that we could allow permitted uses to occur without the need of a coastal development permit. So I would believe that if it was cleared for, you know, all the deed restrictions on the property, that building permit could be issued with the, an accessory dwelling unit on the sites there.
Oh, thank you. So another question is, the NPA school operations are actually all in what would be the resulting parcel number one? Are there any school activities that would take place on resulting parcel number two?
The application did not indicate any of that, but you are correct that the entire school would be located on resultant parcel one. And I believe that the applicant and their agent are present tonight, and they'd be willing to answer that question more specifically if I didn't satisfy that.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, and I have a kind of a follow-on to that, which is, right now, the school building is actually a building that had been a residence. And I am wondering if accessory dwelling units up to four on the two parcels were to be built, would that actually end up potentially being four new buildings used for school purposes, or would they really be residences used for residential use? And I think probably the applicant could explain that a little bit as well.
Yeah, you know, if I may, those are great questions, but if a permit was requested for development on parcel one as a residential development, we would have to take a look at that to see how it falls in line with the adopted action for that, and it could require, in some respects, a modification to the existing coastal development permit for the entitlements to the school. If they, so I think that's probably how we would handle it. It is a residential parcel that has entitlements to operate a school. A lot of, throughout the city of Arcata, does allow schools with a use permit, so it is not unusual to have schools located in residential zoning areas. But anyway, I think I'll let it go and see if it comes up again, or if you have further questions. It, you know, is highly speculative, you know, that I would caution about maybe going towards, if, if the applicant wanted to do additional uses on the school site, certainly a modification of the coastal development permit that gave that entitlement would be required, is probably the best answer.
Okay, great. Okay, so then there's one last question, and again, maybe, maybe this is just something that's going to come up. Would the school use permit that's currently for the entire parcel then be restricted to resulting parcel number one, or would it also extend to resulting parcel number two?
The entitlements for the school was, they did identify where those activities were going to include, were going to be conducted, and they were all on that side of Fickle Hill Creek, on their side. So basically, it's going to stay where it is. The school, the action to allow the school did not include anything on the other side of the creek.
Okay, so there would be no school activities permitted on resulting parcel number two unless they came back to the city? unless they came back to the city and asked for permission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, good questions.
Can I also just weigh in on the, can I also just weigh in on the question about an accessory dwelling use on resulting parcel one?
Please.
So in order to be an accessory dwelling unit, you have to have a primary unit on the site. And right now that resulting parcel one, the structure was converted out of residential use and into school use. So they don't have a primary unit. They can't obtain principally permitted through the state ADU law, an accessory dwelling unit. So I think Joe's assessment is, is correct. They would have to come in for some, for another coastal development permit if they were trying, trying to obtain a future residential use on the site.
Okay, thanks very much for that clarification.
Are there any other commission questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the public comment on this item. David, do you have anybody queued up for that?
We do. The applicant's agent is in attendance. Mike, I think you should be able to unmute yourself and, and speak to the commission.
Okay.
Change the screen so that we can, I think we can get rid of this graphic, right?
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
We hear you fine.
Great, thank you. I'm, I'm the agent. Mike O'Hern is my name. I'm the agent. I'm a land surveyor. I drew the tentative map and my office is acting as the agent for the owner. So mainly I would just like to answer any questions. Staff did a great job of summarizing the project and I'm really impressed with the PowerPoint presentation under the limitations we have with the Zoom format. I think it was really, really good. But anyway, I would just like to answer any questions that might arise. The whole purpose of this subdivision is to result in two parcels that can be financed separately. There's no development potential in mind at this point. It's really just for financing purposes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Are there any commission questions on, of Mike? Kimberly, go ahead, please. You're muted.
I just wanted to clarify. The Stokes House on parcel number two had not previously had a cultural study. But if there was going to be any major, I guess, digging, then they would obtain a cultural study. Is that correct?
If that question is for me, I think it's better directed at Joe. That is my understanding, but I think that's a city function to answer that question.
Yes, if possible, I'd go ahead and be able to answer that.
Please, Joe.
So when we look at the, these types of things, there's either tribal cultural resources, cultural resources, or historic resources. And the Stokes House, the structure itself could be a historic Euro-American type history, historic resource. That was moved from, I think, right around City Hall area. And the, there is extensive knowledge of that on other cultural resource reports that were done. And so what was done on resultant parcel two as far as the 2011 entitlements to the charter school was that they did a surface reconnaissance of the entire site. And then they looked at this house and saw that it was this house that was moved there about 60 years ago and is known as the Stokes House. There were no subsurface investigations done on parcel two. So there were no random digging holes and pits and looking at, and screening that for material. But that was done on parcel one. And so that is one reason that we're interested in having a recommended condition of approval in respect with the Wiat tribal historic preservation officers and their suggestion and the suggestion of the archaeologists that prepared the initial study. Did I answer Commissioner White's question?
The short answer is yes.
Okay, so that condition of approval will only happen if there's going to be any major dredging or any, any kind of below the surface movement. So if they don't do anything, then there won't have to be a further study on that. But if they're going to be adding, then they would, that would trigger that? Is that how that works?
Yeah, the way it's going to probably work, there's going to be like a pre-consultation with the, the tribal historic preservation officers on the type of development that they're being proposed at the time. So if, it really depends on what development activity is going to occur and where it's going to occur. And then there'll be a consultation with the tribal historic preservation officers and come up with a game plan.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Are there any other commission questions on that staff report? Or I'm sorry, of, of the applicant at this point? Seeing none, Mike, do you have any last comments?
No, again, I'd just like to thank staff for all the hard work on this project and summarizing the many different facets in a really coherent and easy to understand fashion and request your approval of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for your participation. And David, are there no other public comments? Okay, we will close the public comment portion and move on to commission deliberations and/or a motion on this item. Any commissioners with a thought or a motion?
I'd move to approve this project.
So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second on that?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Would staff like to do a roll call vote? You're muted, David.
Winning at Zoom bingo. I'd be happy to. And just to clarify, the motion is to adopt the action.
Yeah, and do we need to include the conditions of approval in this motion?
They're all included in the action.
We're assuming. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion by Davies and second by?
Elcock.
Say Delco. Okay, sorry for that. A little bit, a little bit behind on my record keeping today. Commissioner Davies.
Aye.
Commissioner Visete Elcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
Commissioner Figaro.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Yes.
And Chair Tagney.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations to the applicants. And we will continue on. We have now two business items to take care of. The first of which is to adopt resolution number PC dash two one dash zero one finding that the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, 22 is consistent with the Arcata general plan. Is there a staff report or comment on this item?
Yeah, I'll provide a little context, particularly because many commissioners are new and haven't done a general plan conformance for, or consistency determination for our capital improvement program before. So I'll just give a high level overview of the action that's happening tonight. And then ultimately, we're going to ask that you adopt resolution number PC dash two one dash zero one, which would be finding that the new projects posed for the capital improvement program for this coming fiscal year are consistent with the general plan. California government code requires that a jurisdiction ensure that the projects that are being conducted by the jurisdiction are consistent with this general plan. The method that it uses to do that is by bringing it to the, the planning body, which is you all, and having a consistency determination being made to the legislative body that you will then forward your recommendation to before they adopt that capital improvement program and commit funds to, to those projects. And so the format that you see here is real consistent with the formats that we've adopted before. But we have a resolution outlining the reasons why we're doing this and then ultimately adopting, as you'll see on packet page 34, the new projects that are being added to the capital improvement program here. These three projects we've identified based on their project ID, but more importantly, for your purposes, there's a general plan policy number and then a project justification. I'm not going to read through each of these for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about them. But I did want to note that due to a technological challenge we had, we neglected to include in your packet tonight, attachment B. The action doesn't formally affect attachment B, which is the list of prior capital improvements. But I do want to note for, you know, for your commission's purposes, the types of projects that we were talking about in here. And so there's improvements to our food works facility, multi-year project with our EPA brownfields assessment, some police station improvements, improvements that for, you know, sidewalks, streets, trails throughout town. Several of these are related to grants that we received through some of the housing programs. So for example, the sustainable transportation infrastructure project was adopted as a, you know, grant or awarded as a grant to the city to provide all kinds of projects in the, in town. And you'll see on here, projects that we do for, you know, improving our natural areas as well as projects such as re-roofing the corporation yard. So these are the kinds of projects. This list has already been adopted. And I apologize for not getting into your packet tonight. But I will just kind of cruise through here as, as we're, you know, talking about these. And if you have any questions about what's included in your packet or the attachment that we're showing on screen, be happy to answer them. So with that, I see a couple of public members, I'm not sure if they are here to comment on this item, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have and/or, you know, field any question, questions from the public.
David, I'd like to ask two brief questions on the list that's on tonight's packet. One is, where is this 30th Street? I can't identify that in my mind. And then the second one, I'll let you answer them both together. The second one is one of these new buses, is that associated with the transportation grants that came along with the large housing project south of the co-op?
Yeah, it is. In fact, the, so I'll stop sharing this now. The 30th Street project is the Urock Indian Housing Authority project that you may have heard about. It's off of Alliance near the very end of Alliance where the, the red building is kind of near where the gas station is. So 30th Street has the Arcata Mobile Home Park. And then if you go to the very back of that, there was a subdivision that was approved back in 2007 that never got off the ground. It was one of our, our lost subdivisions where it went through the entire process, but then just couldn't be built for financial reasons. The Urock Indian Housing Authority came in and were awarded tax credits and affordable housing, sustainable communities money to, to finish that project. And part of that project through their affordable housing, sustainable communities money in combination with the affordable housing, sustainable communities money from the, the new sorrel place, that's the old Isaacson's project is being combined to buy an electric, a couple of electric buses. Vice Chair Mayor.
Yeah, I, thanks for bringing that attachment B that, that we didn't get to see. My first reaction when I saw the list was, wow, that's, that's all the new projects. Where are the old ones? So now we know. Are there any projects that, you know, I, I know that the capital improvement program is, is kind of a rolling list where every year new projects are added and then after, it's like a five-year cycle, right? Are there, are there any projects that have fallen off that list after five years that have not actually been completed?
I will have to get back to you on that. I don't know off the top of my head. Generally speaking, we keep them on the list until they're funded and, and, you know, built out. So you're basically asking about any project that was on the list, didn't get funded, didn't get built, but fell off the list. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the information.
Okay, thanks.
So can we assume from that that all of the attachment B projects have been funded?
No, basically there was a technological glitch I, and the attachment B, even though it's uploaded in the system, it didn't print into the packets. All of the items in attachment B are still either under current funding cycle. So these either have dedicated funding committed now and will be built out over the course of the next couple of years or we're still seeking funding for them, but the council has identified these as a priority project or the, or the community has. So all of these projects are either under, in, in process. So for example, here's the footsoil court. This one is completed and will come off of the next cycle. So they're either, you know, completed, waiting, pending, coming off, or are in process, waiting for, for funding.
Okay, and then attachment A that is included is just three additional new items to the list, is it? The understanding? And David, would it be easy for you to email attachment B to us for reference later?
Yeah, I absolutely get that attached to the packet so that both the commission and the public can see that after this meeting.
Okay.
And I'll also send out notification when that happens.
Any other questions on this?
Yeah, Commissioner Visete Elcock.
You're muted, Julie.
Okay, I just have some teeny tiny little things to say. So one is means of financing, is that not supposed to be included on here or is that just for the city council to see the means of finance? Because that would be very interesting. And I believe one of those sections says that we're supposed to have the means for financing. That would be interesting to find that out. And then the other thing is that these three projects clearly, clearly, I mean, completely line up with what our general plan says except for the new electric buses. RC dash eight A, that mostly talks about the suppliers and that they're on the same boat as we are. But the other, the RC eight dash C matches exactly. So did we make sure the supplier, those electric buses has our same, is on the same page as we are?
I'm sorry, that the, that the which is on the same page?
The suppliers. So when you referenced, yeah, you said you referenced RC dash eight A and it mostly talked about the suppliers. So I assume that you took, I assume you took care of that.
What, I guess what I would say to that is that, you know, we don't have a policy. I mean, this, the general plan is, is 20 years old now. We didn't have electric buses when we adopted the general plan. And so, you know, we strung the other policies that support, not necessarily specifically say, you know, we're going to have an electric flight, electrified fleet. So let me just look at RC eight A and see if I can answer anything more specifically about that.
It was, it just talked about the suppliers, but you referenced RC eight C and that exactly lines up with the new electric buses.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that
Just wondering if you vetted the suppliers or not?
I I can't say for certain. I don't know who's going to supply the bus. So I can't say for certain that they policies, but but they're they're creating electric buses. So so, you know, that that is
Yeah.
I guess tangentially related. And if the committee or commission doesn't feel comfortable keeping that one in because it's only tangentially related, we can remove it.
It doesn't matter. I just wanted to point it out.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, Julie. So if we're done clarifying on this topic, you're looking for an adoption of resolution and what format do you see that in as a business item? Are we doing a roll call vote on this?
Yeah, that would be a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote. We do have one person who's wanting to speak on the item as well.
Oh, good. All right. Well, let's go there.
Gene, you're in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I just wanted you to know that I was here. We had a lot of issues and I didn't, I got here late, so I'm here if anybody has questions for me.
Okay, your item was actually approved and we're on to the next one.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one other person who's interested in speaking, I believe, on this item. Go ahead, Sean, you're in the meeting.
Hi, this is Sean Armstrong. I saw on the agenda there that, or sorry, on the list of capital improvements, a reference to a site plan for the Ennis Park expansion. I believe the action that you guys are trying to take tonight is compliance with the general plan. And so I had two questions. One is, can you speak to the agricultural values that are perhaps being preconditioned into that site planning? Because that would be compliant with the general plan. But developing it is other than farmland is not compliant with the general plan. Land use code, yes, but the land use code shouldn't have been adopted in violation of the general plan. We've been over this a couple of times, but just to be technical and literal, developing that as a park is not in compliance with the general plan, not its mapping, not its language. So can you speak to a little bit about that capital improvement item about how it's compliant with the general plan?
Okay, is that the sum of your your comments to the commission? Sean?
Yes, on this item, I'll be speaking on the formula restaurant bit, but that's Ennis Park expansion question. Yep. How is it compliant with the general plan?
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments from the public, David?
It looks like that's it.
Okay, so we can close that portion and move on to commission deliberations. And or a motion to approve.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve. We're ready. Motion to adopt P C dash twenty-one dash O one.
All second.
So we have a motion from Julie Vassad Elcock and a second from Scott Davies.
Okay. Commissioner Davies.
I I do have a question before we go forward.
Please.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a lot of papers in front of me. Is that motion to accept to find the new projects in compliance with the general plan or the entire capital improvement program?
It's only the new projects. So attachment A.
Okay, and so an action with regard to the remaining projects that were in attachment B that we didn't get. There's there's no action with regard to those items on the capital improvement plan. Is that? Is that correct?
That's that's correct. Yeah, the the prior list was already determined compliant with the the general plan. And if the commission wishes, I can try and address you know, the the question that was raised now, or I'd be happy to bring that back in the future.
Okay, thanks.
I think clarifying that that is already on the previous list and has been addressed in the past settles that topic. Unless any other commission, well, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Why don't we go ahead and do a roll call on that and see if it flies?
Okay, Commissioner Davies.
Hi.
Commissioner Vassad Elcock.
Hi.
Commissioner Barstow.
Hi.
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner White.
Hi.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Hi.
And Chair Tegney.
Hi. So that business item recommendation moves forward. And we have one more business item on our agenda, which is to consider zoning interpretation regarding the city's formula restaurant ordinance. Do we have a staff report on that one?
Yeah, absolutely. This this is a business item before you. There's no decision that that necessarily needs to be made tonight on this item. The land use code provides the zoning administrator the authority to interpret any provision within the land use code, including definitions and application of ordinances. And it's customary, though not required, to to bring those zoning interpretations to the planning commission. If, you know, the zoning administrator doesn't actually forward the zoning interpretation to the commission to make themselves, so that they can, you know, be plugged into decisions that are being made about the interpretation of the code, but also it affords the planning commission the opportunity to initiate an appeal. If they disagree with the the decision of the zoning administrator. And so the item before you tonight, it's really just an informational. It does provide the opportunity to ask questions and understand in more detail. You know, the the nature of the zoning interpretation. The zoning interpretation was included in your packet as attachment A. And this zoning interpretation was actually a you know, because of the nature of it, it was brought forward as a business item to the city council to check in on policy because there's a a policy matter that was at stake here. And so I'll walk you through that, but I did want to point out that, you know, I included the the city council's staff report as sort of the main body of information for the planning commission to review. And their direction was to go ahead and complete the zoning interpretation as as I've included in your packet and to initiate a code amendment to to correct the record. To to correct the the zoning. So let me get into just a little bit more detail. And, you know, I found, I found this to be pretty confusing when presented to the city council. And so I'm hopefully going to simplify the issues here. And, you know, I'm gonna trust that you've read the the staff report. And I'll sort of launch, sort of into the middle. At the core of this zoning interpretation is the difference between what our intentions are when we adopt code and what our code actually says. When the formula restaurant ordinance was adopt or was created, the Committee for Democracy in Corporations worked on it. They made a recommendation, working with staff to the planning commission. Ultimately, the planning commission forwarded that recommendation to the city council. City council adopted some new legislation that got into the land use and development guide, the prior zoning ordinance. Included in there was a definition of restaurant and a definition of formula restaurant. A very plain read of the definition of restaurant in that original definition excluded a restaurant Chester's Chicken that was included in the early deliberations. And so the intent was include Chester's Chicken. The effect was when it was adopted to exclude Chester's Chicken from the definition of restaurant and therefore from the definition of formula restaurant. Fast forward to two thousand and eight, we adopted a new zoning ordinance. The entire formula restaurant code got amended and changed and shifted and slight slightly varied from the original language to incorporate into the new code. And because of that new change, Papa Murphy's dropped out. Papa Murphy's was originally included in the intent, but it dropped out of the definition. And so what I have before you here is the definition of restaurant that is in our land use code today, a retail business selling ready to eat food and or beverages for on or off premise consumption. I have some clarifying detail, but that's the that's the heart of it. So there are a couple of problems interpreting these as, you know, applying to Chester's Chicken. The first is that Chester's Chicken is not a retail business. The staff report goes into, you know, additional detail about this, but while it is a separate franchise that was purchased by Chevron, there's no distinction between the two businesses. It's not an independent business for all intents and purposes. It could be considered an accessory use within the Chevron. But it's not a separate entity, so it doesn't qualify as a retail business. It had more explicit problems from the definition that was adopted in the land use code, but that's the core, at the core, that's the problem with defining Chester's Chicken as a restaurant. So if it's not a restaurant, it's not a formula restaurant. Selling ready to eat food and or beverages presents a problem in its current state for Papa Murphy's. While there is some food that is ready to eat at Papa Murphy's and or drink that you can buy and and drink. You could even drink that on premises probably. The the primary function of Papa Murphy's is for non-ready to eat food. It's food that you take home with you and then cook to eat. In addition, there's some sort of more basic problems with this definition. A retail business selling ready to eat food and or beverages for on or off premise consumption could be a food truck, could be a convenience store, could be a market deli. So there's lots of gray area with this this definition, the way that it's currently defined. And I again dealt into this in great detail in the written staff report. So the the city council recognized that we have a, you know, disconnect between what we intended, what I think we all experience in the world. You know, the way that I've started thinking about it today is I've been trying to draft a new definition for restaurant is that we all know it when we see it. None of us gets up and thinks to ourselves, I want to go have food at a restaurant, and then you end up at a business that is not a restaurant. So you know it when you see it, it has to be able to be defined. And so I just wanted to share with you, because the council did initiate a code amendment, my current thinking on what this is going to look like. And so this new definition makes some reference to the California Retail Food Code, which helps a little bit. But when I was speaking with the county staff today, they admitted that, you know, there's no definition of restaurant anywhere in the California Retail Food Code. And one of the first, and it's and it's broad, it's expansive. Their purpose is to regulate food safety and it's more dependent on what are they actually doing with the food than what do they call the the business that's selling it? And so here's here's the current working definition, and I'm gonna, you know, work over the next month or so to try and refine this with the public and with the regulators, planning commission, and bring it forward in a code amendment. So a restaurant cafe coffee shop, which is the grouping of business types that are regulated under table two on our land use code, is a retail permanent food facility as defined in the California Retail Food Code. Principally engaged in selling menu ordered, ready to eat food pursuant to California Retail Food Code, which also includes in the food code, it includes things that are ready to eat or things, you know, as you typically think of them, or things that are ready to eat but need a little bit of preparation. So Papa Murphy's qualifies into this. Which may include food that is edible with no or minimal additional preparation and or beverages. Now, this underlying sentence here, where allowed may be operated as an accessory use, is intended to capture the types of businesses like Chester's Chicken, where it's operating as an accessory use inside of another primary use. There's already provision in the code that also is a little confusing with regard to accessory uses that will clean up through this ordinance process. This underlying sentence probably is not absolutely necessary, but I think it would help to clarify future understanding of the fact that we do in fact mean if you have a restaurant that's like Chester's Chicken inside of a gas station or another convenience store, we're we're intending to regulate that as well. And then I just sort of streamlined the last few sentences. Food and or beverage service may be provided through counter service, drive-through table service, delivery, or other means. There are constantly innovations in business practices. And so we need to be able to capture the fact that we don't know what the future is. You might get food delivered by a drone. And may include on or off premise consumption. So this is the proposed new language that will bring both Papa Murphy's and Chester's Chicken back into regulation as restaurants under our code. The council further wanted to see some changes in the way that our formula restaurant ordinance works. And specifically, they wanted to continue to exclude formula restaurants from the from the downtown. But then allow formula restaurants to to move around a little bit. Right now, our formula restaurant ordinance limits the restaurants to the districts where the business districts where they're originally located. And so one has been vacant for, you know, more than a decade, or Denny's used to be over on Jane's Road, for example. So they they wanted to recognize that these should be able to move around a little bit, but then not to get overly intensified in the Valley West. So proposed new language for for the formula restaurant ordinance is, which is nine four two one six four, is where restaurant cafe coffee shop is allowed by Article Two zoning districts and allowable land uses. The number shall be capped to nine. A new formula restaurant is only allowed if it replaces an existing. And then no more than six can be established in the Valley West Giantoli Business District. The table, land use code table two dash ten already restricts formula restaurants from the central business district from the downtown core. And so we don't need additional language for that. But here's again a nod to the fact that these restaurants may be operated as an accessory use. But is, and if it's not independently branded and franchised from the primary use, it's not considered a formula restaurant. The purpose for this is that you may have facilities like the Signature Cafe, which is a deli inside of Safeway, which under even the new definition of restaurant could be classified as a restaurant. Clearly, Safeway has more than eleven and therefore would qualify as a formula restaurant. But it's it's not. So there's a a problem with the definitions there. At the same time, I think we've all seen safeways that have a Starbucks in in the lobby area at the front of the front of the store. So Signature Cafe with this new regulation would not be regulated because it's not independently branded and franchised. Whereas Starbucks would be regulated as a formula restaurant because it is independently branded and franchised, even though it's contained within the Safeway. So that's sort of the current thinking on how to resolve the the problems with this twenty-year-old code. We should expect to have to update our codes every once in a while. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about, you know, any of this that I've just presented or the the zoning interpretation that's included in your packet. I do know that there are public members who wish to speak on this as well.
Thank you, David. Are there commission questions or clarifications at this point?
I have
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure I understand. So then Chester's is considered independently branded? But Starbucks, because they would use a different register, I'm confused about that.
Yeah, so the the really confusing thing is that I think most people think of Chester's Chicken as a restaurant. You go in there, you order food off of a menu. You hand it that food, you pay for it, you go eat it. That's kind of what we think of as a as a restaurant. Chester's is certainly somewhere in the gray area because it's only one notch up from, you know, a hot case that you might have in a deli or a hot case you might have in a convenience store. So this, the council wanted us to write a definition that considered Chester's Chicken as a restaurant and moreover, as a formula restaurant. So this new language would consider it as a formula restaurant. It is independently branded and it's independent and it's a franchise. Chester's Chicken happens to be owned by the Chevron. It's not, you know, it's not like a leased space where some other business operates it. And in fact, they don't have a separate till. They don't account for the food differently from anything else in the store. If you buy a Snickers bar, if you buy a Chester's Chicken, whatever, they go all they all go into the same tax base. So this definition helps to resolve.
I guess my question is, how does that differ then from Signature Deli at Safeway, which also goes into the same till? It it is just like Chester's, isn't it, or not?
Well, the difference is that it's not independently branded. Signature is the Safeway brand. You can find signature products all over the entire store. And it's not a franchise. So Signature is just part of that business. So this is an attempt to try and catch up with current business models. The business models may change, and we may have to change them in the future.
So at this time, then Chester's will be included as a formula restaurant, correct?
Yeah, under the zoning interpretation, it's not included. Under the proposed amendment, it would be included.
Thank you for that clarification.
Scott, please.
You're muted, Scott.
David, I just wanted to, by this thinking, I wanted to confirm that. So Ramones, for example, in Wildberries would not count, even though it's a separate business because it has less than nine brand locations?
Yeah, so Ramones would be considered a restaurant, but it would not be considered a formula restaurant because there are fewer than than twelve. That's correct.
Could I ask a question? Wasn't pantry, which I know is kind of a moot point because now it's peppers. But at one point, wouldn't that have brought the designation to Valley West to six? Because pantry is a formula restaurant. And then and and then to piggyback on that kind of is I'm curious, does anybody know if Oriental Buffet would be considered a formula restaurant? I went online and I found thirteen that were called Oriental Buffets, not to be confused with New Oriental Buffet. Some had menus available, and it looked like our Oriental Buffet that's in both Fortuna and Arcata. But I couldn't figure that out. I was wondering if anybody else knew.
Good question.
We can certainly research that. I don't know it off the top of my head, and I don't know the answer to the Village Pantry either. I believe that that was more of a local phenomenon.
David, as this is part of city code, when, and I guess that's what's driving this, is that you have applicants that are wanting to locate, and you're required to say no because of the restrictions of these numbers. So that's when this would come up and force the city staff to research whether or not an applicant qualifies as a formula restaurant. Is that said correctly?
That's correct, yeah. The subway that was in North Town closed several months ago. And they submitted building plans to reopen in the Union Town Shopping Center across the street here. And the traditional interpretation at the staff level was that Papa Murphy's was a formula restaurant. I think most people consider it a restaurant. Our sales tax generated under that that business type is listed as a restaurant. It prepares food, et cetera. And so that that's what really motivated this was a couple of inquiries of businesses that wanted to open their doors. And we were struggling with, how do you know, how do we tell them no when the definitions don't necessarily, you know, follow that that interpretation? And so instead of just making the interpretation, you know, recognizing this is a policy issue. I mean, the the CDC and the and the city council originally adopted this with, you know, some, you know, preservation, like economic preservation goals in mind for, you know, retaining local businesses, retaining character of the town, you know, trying to prevent, you know, conversion of, you know, restaurants to, you know, all formula restaurants, so having a cap on it. So there were a lot of findings that were made in the original adoption of this that that focused on, you know, Arcata being Arcata, basically. And so it's it's really, it's a policy matter, is why I brought it to the council as a policy question before I made that formal determination.
Yes, Kimberly.
Sorry, I had another question. So you're, are you bringing it before the planning commission? Do we have input on it, or is this a done deal? And then my other question is, as we write the new code, I've noticed that the designation numbers we're going to change, say, for Valley West, and I'm just wondering, it would make sense to me if we would change the designation from Union Town to two to three so that we don't have empty buildings in Union Town. And so that subway, you know, has an an ability to move over where they can do business. And then my other question was, was that cap for Valley West actually going to be six? And do we have any input on changing that number?
Yeah, so to your first question, is this a done deal? The zoning interpretation is signed, it's in your packet. It was based on council direction. The typical process is that a decision can be appealed. And again, for sort of, you know, public policy purposes, we typically bring it to the planning commission so that the planning commission can initiate an appeal if they wish to. And in this case, it would be a little awkward because the planning commission's appeal would go to the city council. And the city council has already said, we'd like to see this zoning interpretation made. In terms of the upcoming code, absolutely, the the planning commission's recommendation will be considered by the by the city council before it's adopted. The direction that we received from the city council was to eliminate the geographic restrictions so that they could move around in in commercial districts where they're allowed. But to put a limit of six on the Valley West, recognizing that by the time we get the ordinance adopted, there may be six there already. And because one of the applicants is is, you know, prospective applicants is in the Valley West. And so the other element was to prohibit in the downtown, which there's already a prohibition in the downtown, but they wanted to see us prohibit downtown. So those are sort of the the marching orders I received to start drafting this. Certainly, when it comes back to the planning commission, and I anticipate this like sometime in the next month, to come back before your body. It will have been looked at by, you know, agencies that deal with this. You know, the public will have, you know, the planning commission provide input. Will likely take it to the EDC Economic Development Committee and get their input before we bring it forward. And and it's absolutely, it's up for for discussion.
Hey, David, we're we're edging on something that feels more like deliberations, and I'm thinking that there might be a couple of public comment. People waiting in the wings, is that true?
We have one public member who'd like to speak on this.
Well, if the commission doesn't mind, it what we might want to do here is just hear from the public comment, and then all of us weigh in and really, just because you are looking for some direction, as little as that might change anything at this juncture. I think everybody might like to comment on this, and maybe we can just do that after public comment, if that's all right, unless we just have a couple more clarifying questions.
Let's hear a public comment.
Okay. Is that all right? Let's go.
Okay, Sean, you're in the meeting.
Hello, this is Sean Armstrong. I'm former chair of the Corporate Committee on Corporations and Democracy and organized the committee in its first incarnation. Sat on it twice as the chair and had a lot of personal involvement in crafting the ordinance. Hopefully, you guys had a chance to see the email that I submitted to you. I'm not entirely clear what the consequence is. So I'm not trying to speak in support or opposition per se of what's happening because it's so far not clear. But I think that the thing to be consistent, and the reason why we capped it by the business district was to prevent a concentration in the Valley West, Valley East area, as well as the North Town. There are two parts of our community that were distinctly moving in the direction of becoming more and more formula restaurant oriented. And I think that we succeeded. I'm really proud of how in the last twenty years, you know, growing up here now as a forty five year old man, that our restaurant community has grown more local and more resilient, and it uses more locally farmed ingredients. And the business community of Arcata was actually strongly in support of this. McDonald's showed up and supported this ordinance because they themselves, as a franchise, they weren't like owned by McDonald's. They were a franchise. They saw how this would benefit them. So there was, it was wide scale support for the strategy of having it capped by this group. And with the consequence of not creating more, I would call them crappy restaurants in the Valley West, Valley East area, which is where the city of Arcata has structurally created all the multifamily housing in the trailer home parks, which has the function of concentrating the people of color in our community, those who have been economically disenfranchised for hundreds of years. And we were trying to respond to food deserts, you know, like the movie Super Size Me that had come out. But you know, this is not like new thinking around what has happened to communities of color and the placement of crappy restaurants, things that sell low quality food, not very nutritious, lots of it, very rich in calories and fat, but not with vegetables and fruits. So as you move forward in considering this, I hope that you stay consistent with that thinking. And like I said, I'm not entirely clear if this is a step forward or a step back for the Valley West Giannoli neighborhood. I'd appreciate if Director Loa would speak more specifically on how many restaurants are there now and what would be the consequence of capping them at six? So I could have an opinion on if this is a good idea or bad. But say it again, that the tactic of capping it per business district was deliberate, very well thought out, widely supported. And I don't think should be tinkered with casually without understanding what the consequences are. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Sean. David, any others for public comment?
There are none.
Okay, so let's deliberate or ask any more questions, any comments on this before we, you know, we're not asked to make a motion or anything else. So this is just David hearing us out. John, please.
Just a thought I wanted to throw in for when we get to considering the change in the code about Chester's Chicken. It's a franchise. And I think that, you know, because it's a franchise, it's almost almost not part of the of the Chevron gas station, even though they share the same till. I'm sure that at some point, or I suspect at some point, that they have to report their sales and somehow separate out the sales of the Chester's Chicken from the sales of gasoline. Because I would expect there to be a franchise fee going to the the franchiser, to Chester's Chicken. So there might, that might be a point to work into whatever definitions and and code changes we come up in the future.
But it, there there is no franchiser with Chester Chicken, correct? Isn't it Chevron? Isn't it all the same company?
Chester's Chicken is based in Alabama or someplace, according to Wikipedia. And in twenty seventeen, they had over a thousand Chester's Chickens in malls and and gas stations and stuff. Their 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 pattern is to be folded into an existing, an existing business somehow.
Thanks, John.
Who else? Kimberly?
Just want to clarify that we are considering Chester's as a formula restaurant, and that is included in the nine or at the current five at Giannoli, correct?
Currently, there's a gap in regulating it as a formula restaurant because the definitions strictly applied don't support calling it a formula restaurant. What we're attempting to do is to correct that because I think everyone would acknowledge that it's a restaurant. You know, maybe, maybe not the best food, as as was pointed out by the speaker, but but it is a restaurant, and it's clearly got a formula pattern. And I think as John and and I'm sorry, as Commissioner Barstow and Commissioner Davies pointed out, you know, it's it's a franchise. And so all of those factors put together suggest that it should be regulated. That was the intent. The original intent was that it should be regulated. And so we're trying to correct the implementation so that it is regulated. So currently, it would count, and in the future, it will.
I want to throw in that this is such the new pattern. We see it up and down Highway Five. Every time you stop for gas, there's a KFC or something inside of the gas station. And we have gas stations sprinkled all over town. They can change ownerships and play this game all over town. And if we don't count them, they don't get considered under this formula scrutiny. Down in Fortuna, there's the Aztec Grill in some gas station that competes like crazy for the lunch crowd. And it's a, it is a restaurant. There's no way it's not. They may share the same till, but it is fully on a restaurant that's competing with all the little local mom and pops around town down there. I love the new definition, and I really hope that it sails through. Yes, Judith.
Hi, sorry for the unmute. Yeah, I think as long as we're starting to think about refining the ordinance, there 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 are a couple of other things I I just want to throw out there. It it does actually help to look at the models of places around town now and and really think hard about, are they in? Are they out? Do we want them to be in, or do we want them to be out under the new definitions? But but if we're going to start changing aspects of that ordinance, there there are a couple of other business models that I'd like to throw out there and ask if we can think about regulating under a redefinition. And I noticed, David, that you had included in that language for restaurant a permanent establishment. And I wanted to raise the issue of, you know, the planning commission has in the past dealt with issues of food trucks and of vacant lots or parking lots in effect being used or proposed as food courts with multiple businesses operating there. If we're going to be looking to refine our definition of formula restaurant, I think it's pretty important that we not limit it to permanent establishments or that we add some additional regulation there. I know in many areas that have been encouraging food courts and food trucks by local businesses, unless they have language in there, the fast food restaurants are rapidly hitting the roads for mobile takeouts. And and I would really like to see Arcata take preemptive action to avoid suddenly having a McEspresso in in every parking lot in town. in in every parking lot in town or a, you know, a mobile, a mobile Starbucks. Or, you know, any, any number of other possibilities. And I think that we we would do well if we're going to be adjusting that formula restaurant regulation to look at some new business models that I'm pretty sure we're going to be having to deal with in the very immediate future.
Well, Judith, wouldn't the, wouldn't, wouldn't we be covered in the sense that there are franchises that have more than nine locations?
No, no, we wouldn't because the new definition that that is being proposed, and I I I'm talking about the future if we're going to be messing with this. The new definition that David proposed is specific to permanent restaurants. And I I understand why it's important for, you know, land use perspective to maybe consider that. But I'd also propose perhaps adding an additional regulation to address those mobile businesses as well.
I I share that concern.
You know, I have to say, Vice Chair Mayor, that I spent a good part of the day trying to think of all the different iterations of restaurant, and that's one I didn't come up with. You just blew my mind. I I think you're right. I think we need to, I think we need to consider that. I don't know that it belongs in this buried in this definition. But I'll certainly give that some thought before I bring it back.
Um, yeah, if if that's, you know, when you bring the issue back to the council, you know, that may be something to throw out to them as well. But you know, I I I admittedly have not been traveling a whole lot since COVID. But but I have, I have been sort of paying remote attention and this, you know, this blossoming of franchise mobile, you know, food outlets is is huge and it's coming our way.
Who else?
Me.
Go for it.
Hi, so I actually remember really very, very clearly when this ordinance came out, I was really involved with the Arcata Chamber of Commerce at that time. And I was so concerned because I thought we needed a name brand or some kind of business to draw people off the freeway into coming to Arcata and picking our local businesses. And I was, I was wrong. People, and now I know, I mean, people come to Arcata to go out, you know, to our restaurants. They'll drive in to Arcata for our restaurants. Our restaurants are that good. So I think we've got something special going on. And I do really like the the direction that the council is going and David, that you're you're going on this. I think this, we're heading in the right direction. The only thing, and this is probably completely wishful thinking for me, is what if we, say Jitter Bean or Sushi Spot or Ramones or something, what if they do so well, you know, wishful thinking, that they become a franchise themselves? What do they have over 13, 14? Can we have a special spot for them in Arcata?
I'm really glad you brought that up because there are nine Jitter Beans right now, so they are getting close.
And but they're, and they're local. They're us. They that they shouldn't be included in this, I think. They should have a special exemption because they're local.
I agree.
You know, we can certainly consider that. I think, you know, the straightforward answer is that, you know, the the ordinance, it actually currently says irrespective of location or ownership to define formula restaurant. And so those, those would be included. I don't know this for a fact, but my understanding is that the the number that was used to qualify the the you know, the breaking point between formula restaurant and not was based on some local businesses and the numbers that they they currently had. Another interesting factor is you can have, you know, we've already had a business. I think West Side Pizza, when it first opened up, had fewer than 12. Now it has more than 12. And so it wasn't a formula restaurant when it started. It was a franchise, but it wasn't a formula restaurant when it started. Now it is. And so I think, you know, that would take some, some really careful crafting. And and it may be something that, you know, I I don't see off the top a very straightforward solution that doesn't have, you know, a whole host of different caveats. One of the points that, you know, folks have have made during this process as well as that, you know, these franchise owners, I mean, the person who owns Chevron, who owns the Chester's Chicken is is a local person, you know, they're they're local people that work there. And so it's it's not, you know, I think, you know, it doesn't, you can't just translate, you know, as, you know, corporate, therefore bad. And I don't think that's the attempt here, but I do think that, you know, the there probably would have been, you know, much higher proliferation of formula restaurants if, you know, if we didn't have the ordinance. I do think that, you know, I mean, it's multifaceted. I think you're right. People, you know, come to Arcata for, you know, for the restaurants. But I also want to recognize that, you know, a huge portion of our population are students who come here and they don't see anything familiar. And so, you know, you know, kind of balancing that as well. I think that, you know, ultimately, you know, you're going to get that freshman who, you know, is looking for a Subway or a McDonald's that eventually will, you know, take pride in the fact that, you know, Jaffe's is where they they stop off. So I don't know, there's, there's, there's a lot of issues to try and untangle. And and I think that, you know, my approach to this at this point is to try and get to get to the the conclusion of this first fix as quickly as possible. There may be a lot of things that come up in the interim that we need to address. One of the things that the council was concerned with was, you know, well, what if we have a proliferation of Papa Murphy's type businesses that don't currently qualify as a restaurant? And the only response I have to that is, you know, we'll we'll come in with a moratorium if if that does happen. So I guess right now I'm urging quick action. Since, you know, we have have an exposure currently for these business types, you know, to at least patch the hole. And then we may identify several other changes and amendments that we want to make along the way. Honestly, raising the threshold to, you know, 20 or 25 in the future, when when Jitter Bean gets above 12, probably wouldn't have that big of an impact because most of the businesses we're trying to regulate, the Carl's Jr., the McDonald's, et cetera, et cetera, have thousands.
Hey, I have a question about this wandering geographic opportunity that's being presented. We know that the Jane's Road location is no longer a formula restaurant, and we know that the Subway in North Town is no longer a formula restaurant. If they're allowed to geographically move around town and say Subway takes the Rico's location as the letter at the back of the packet addresses. If, say, Co-Central decided to move to a larger location or something, and that building became available, could McDonald's pick up one of these other numbers and say, hey, we're still under nine and there's an empty slot. I want that location right there. And how would we stop it once we open this? Like, they can just kind of move around. I mean, that North Town Shopping Center, to me, seems like a real target location for a couple of more. And how would, how would we say no at that point? If Subway's allowed it, Rico's, what, how do we say no to McDonald's? You know, one
I think that that is the intent. I I think that was the intent to allow, you know, those those businesses to move around. I mean, the Denny's, when it closed, you know, more than a decade ago, you know, effectively locked up one of the formula restaurants in, you know, in vacancy. And so you know, there's, there's multiple sides to this issue, you know, that and, you know, I think that, you know, studying those multiple sides is going to be important to, you know, to, you know, provide some guidance on on the best policy pathway forward. But but to answer your your specific question, would McDonald's be able to open if there was a vacant? If there was, you know, if we were still under the cap, the answer is yes. The the direction that the council gave was to, and again, this was based on one one night's meeting, so I don't want to insinuate that the the planning commission shouldn't have deliberations on this to provide a well thought out recommendation to the council when it comes back to them. But basically, the direction was, yeah, forget the geographical limitations, except continue to protect the Valley West so that there's, you know, six or fewer. And so sort of taking that spot that was at Denny's and moving it over to the Valley West where there's currently opportunity is, I think, what the thinking was.
It's a scary one. Kimberly.
I just think Joe had his hand up. I just wanted to hear what he had to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, it was kind of in response to the question about local businesses that expand beyond 12 and would they be no longer allowed? And at first I kind of thought that it would be the nonconforming section of the land use code would take care of that. But it's kind, would be kind of interesting because it's not necessarily a code change, you know, it's a business change, you know, that became so successful. So I think it would be, you know, we could find it under the nonconforming that those businesses, if all of a sudden Sushi Spot became so successful that they would still be allowed, we wouldn't shut down an existing business.
But we also wouldn't allow them to open a new one. I I agree with each other. The existing ones would be existing nonconforming, but if Sushi Spot wanted to open a, you know, one in Valley West, we'd tell them no at that point. So, you know, we can, we can delve into those issues as we get into the the new proposed code.
And maybe any last thoughts?
Changing the limits.
Do we all feel heard on this? Any closing comments, David, or Joe, or anybody else?
No.
Hey, thank you for your homework, staff, on this. It's a great subject and I'm proud of Arcata for pursuing it. Especially when I go anywhere else to visit my family in other town USA. So moving on from business items, we have correspondence and communications. Does staff have?
I don't have any staff communication. I don't. Joe, do you have any communications?
No.
And does the commission have any communications? All right. Well, seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.